Okay, good evening, everybody. This is Committee of the Whole. It is March 4th at 6:02 or so. Eddie, could you call the roll?
Cobb.
Present.
Suda.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Boyd.
Here.
Just letting you know, Daria is at the hospital. Her mom is not doing well. She is excused. So let's go right into Legislative Review. And we can start. With first readings for consideration for adoption. Oh, 27, 2024 is a resolution declaring April 1st through 5th to be National Community Development Week. And just stop me, anybody, if I get something that you want to ask questions about. The next resolution is oh, 28, a resolution supporting and authorizing the mayor to submit an application to ODNR, I'm sorry, Ohio Department of Natural Resources Recreational Trails Program. Oh, 30 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with embarrassed training solutions. And the last one for requested adoption is a resolution reappointing Tyra Etta Black and Peter DeGolia to the Commission on Aging. Any questions with the first reading for adoption? Yes.
I noted that the appointments, the reappointments are, um, are they done as an emergency? Am I misremembering?
Yes, they are.
Is there a need for that?
Their terms expire on the 7th.
But under state law, their terms continue until their successors are.
Which authority are they?
Just the thought, I mean.
Both of those things are true. They do continue on until a successor is appointed. Or they can be appointed immediately.
Any preference, anybody? On this? Okay. Well, then why don't we just go ahead with it? But we'll keep that in mind. Okay, now first readings. Oh, 29 is an ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels. Oh, this is the Taylor Tudor stuff. Yeah. That's first reading only. Anybody want to discuss that? I mean, that's kind of a good thing. Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The only thing I would mention is that this essentially effectuates the legislation to put into place, or this is the legislation to effectuate the abatements discussed in the development agreement for the Taylor Tudor development that council approved two weeks ago.
Right.
So it's all fully consistent with and lines up with that development agreement.
Oh, 31 is upgrading. Okay, so this is upgrading our zoning code to include regulations regarding places of worship and transmitting the same to the Planning Commission and declaring, well, okay. So this, and I'll probably say this when we're out at regular meeting, I'm going to refer this to planning. Oh, 33.
Mr.
Yes, please.
Just to confer with the Law Director. For the zoning amendments, they need to be referred to the Planning Commission.
Motion by council.
Is that something that the President or council would do, or?
Council typically does that by motion.
By motion, so in a, in a, the formal meeting, they would then.
Correct.
Send it to.
Formal meeting, okay.
Correct.
Like at tonight's meeting, it can be.
I mean, I suppose, I haven't seen it happen. In order for an amendment to the zoning code to become effective, it has to be mandatorily referred to Planning Commission. Additional consideration by council is not prohibited, but the typical pattern is it's introduced, it's referred to Planning Commission, they hold a hearing, they make recommendation that comes back to council.
Council then holds a public hearing.
A hearing on those recommendations.
And then if we were to refer it to, say, the Planning Committee, we would do it after the Planning Commission.
That would probably make the most sense.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Would you like for me to make a motion during the meeting to send that, to refer it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Resolution 033 is the Roper Lot Box legislation that says to support a senior residential lot box program, which would permit the Cleveland Heights Fire Department access to provide emergency services to Cleveland Heights senior residents. Councilwoman Boyd, do you want to, you wanted that to be referred to your committee?
Sure.
Okay. Then I'll do that formally in the meeting. And then, and again, stop me at any time if there's some discussion you want to have here and now. 034, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Valley Freightliner, Inc. for the acquisition of Freightliner 114 SD plus tandem axle cab and chassis. So this, this is something that we allocated in the budget. And let's just formalize it, but.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I know that there were some questions earlier. And I just wanted to make sure that the responses that the Republicans provided, that they were satisfactory.
They were, and as a matter of fact, let me actually copy the response. So as it turns out in this legislation, the cost of these two semi-tractors is $42,000 more than what we budgeted for. So I emailed the Director and I'll just read her answer. I think it's just easier to do that. Because my question was, how are we going to cover that difference? Her answer was, in relation to the coverage for this request, or the overage for the request, I also have legislation for two semi-tractors on the agenda tonight. The cost of the semi tractor came in at $35,320 under the estimate, and that will help offset the $42,154.71. So the overage actually is $6,834.71. And this overage, according to the Director, will probably be offset by other capital equipment estimates. So not the worry that I initially had on the $42,000. Yes, Councilwoman?
Mayor, I am comfortable with the answer that Director Klinkskill gave us, and it's budgeted, and she manages her budget very well. So I don't feel the need for it to go to committee. That's okay.
All right. Next there.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes.
I was just saying thank you.
Oh, welcome. 035, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Valley Firefighter, Freightliners. And then, yeah, this is just a continuation with all three pieces of equipment. And then 36 is a resolution with the Glen Hill Road Machinery Company for a 14-foot stainless steel double pot salt spreader. Again, all of this in the budget. So that includes all of the legislation. I'll look around the room. No. Did you want to add anything?
No, just open to any questions?
Yeah. Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on through the agenda. Legislative proposals. So there were a couple of resolutions emailed to us from Councilwoman Maddox regarding the Gaza War. And we can discuss that now. I, I just want to say that before we do, I'm just going to repeat what I said a few weeks ago when we had a general, kind of more general discussion. And that is, is that our goal should be to help bring our community together. You know, it's not an easy thing. This is a complicated situation. You know, I don't want to see anybody, you know, forested ashamed into speaking about this issue. I think, I think it's legitimate to weigh in on it. I think it's legitimate to say that, like some do, that, you know, councils should not be weighing in on issues like this. And I just want to remind everyone that there's a good portion of our community that has emailed us and communicated with us and said, you know, we should stay out of it. Some say we should be saying something. Some say we should be saying something, but not this. So if the goal here is to bring our community together, you know, we need to be as thoughtful as we can be in this discussion, and I'm sure we will be. Councilman Maddox, do you want to open up the discussion?
Sure. Just for the public, I know that you have the opportunity to take a look online and see these two pieces of potential resolutions, these two examples that came from Drew Herzic that I decided to send over to council, not as a permanent piece that we can just kind of push through, but as a, as a way to really start the dialogue about this conversation, to see if there was any kind of middle ground where we could have a conversation just based on one or both of these pieces or these resolutions, to see if there's any edits or additions we can make or come to some type of agreement where we can kind of speak on this issue in a way that both recognizes our Jewish community, but also recognizes everyone else in our population that, you know, that really has concerns for family members, for friends on both sides of this issue. And so I, I think we have decided to step into this and kind of wade into it. And I think not to address both sides, I think would be, I still believe it's hypocritical. I think to make one statement and not address what's happening now and how things have shifted, I think leaves a huge population of our community really unheard and not seen. And so I've received no less than 60 to 70 emails from residents strongly opposing this and in some cases telling me they'll kind of remember me on Election Day. And I just want to say publicly, as I stated before, you should not be making any decision based on political safety, but what's morally correct. And I'll continue to stand on that. And I think our silence, I think, really speaks louder than words. We've had a Heights tiger lose their life and is impacted by this. I think this is something that we should address. Again, I think this would be a great starting point. I'm open to any additions. I'm open to hear, hear thoughts. But I just want to share again, I welcome any additions. I welcome any edits. I welcome another resolution if we want to take a look at that. I would just like to have that conversation and see if there's something we can build here that will speak to all of the residents in this community and really speak to the gravity of what's happening in all of our areas. And so I just want to say that. Let's see if there's anyone who has anything to say about either of those or any edits, any thoughts about what this council could do in terms of addressing this. And I guess that's all I'll say.
Councilwoman?
So I have had multiple conversations with leaders in the Jewish community about this topic. And what I have said over the past several weeks and continue to say is that our legitimacy as a council is in part based on our responsiveness to all residents. And so it's important for us to listen and create informed and balanced statements. And really, that's all this kind of a resolution is. It's a statement that represents the voices of the residents of our community. It does not enact anything contrary to what some residents have believed and shared. It will not contribute to any negotiations internationally. It will not contribute to a change in the direction that is what we see now. It's simply an opportunity to respond to all residents and be inclusive in their voices. And I've also said that the other part of our responsibility as legislators is when we are creating a statement that represents and reflects all voices, is that it's balanced that way, that it's informed. And so taking what a resident sent to Councilwoman Maddox, I would say that we absolutely have to include language around the negotiated surrender of hostages, as well as condemnation of Hamas as a terrorist organization. And I think it's important also to recognize the graduate of Cleveland Heights High School who lost her life. I think that's, I mean, that's, we talk about our students all the time. So I think it's, that's valid to certainly include a recognition, recognition of her, of her life and death. But to be inclusive and to be balanced, right? I don't apologize for the first resolution we did. We have one of the largest Jewish populations, religious Jewish populations between New York and Chicago. We always have. And so I think it's important for us to reflect that in our messages and our statements. But I do think it's appropriate also, again, to, and really our responsibility to be responsive to all voices in the community as well as we're able. And I would also agree that if we're going to do resolutions, we're going to do resolutions. If we're not going to do resolutions, we shouldn't do resolutions. You can't pick and choose like that, right? If we're going to do resolutions to condemn policies coming out of the state, and again, knowing that that's not going to really contribute to the super majorities' decisions about what they're going to pass and not pass at the state level. If we're going to pass resolutions about, you know, anything that's outside of what we do here in terms of policy and how we serve, directly serve our residents. If we're going to pass any resolutions, then we pass resolutions. If we're not, then we shouldn't, period. That's my belief. Because again, and finally, legitimacy of this body, I believe, falls on its ability to be responsive to all residents in an informed and balanced way, and also to be consistent. So that's where I stand. It's helpful.
In the short time that I've been on council, when we have weighed in with resolutions on matters that don't involve the govern, the governing of this city or the touch on the majority of our residents, there has been overwhelming support from the residents. And when I say overwhelming, I'm talking 90% plus that were in favor of our passing that resolution. And there was overwhelming majority on council. And when I say overwhelming support on council, I mean six, at least six of the seven members. I think is evidenced by the number of emails that we have all received since the agenda became public that had Mr. Herzog's proposals. There is significant opposition even to the language and the wording of those. And because I don't find that there is overwhelming support in the community for our passing a resolution on this situation, I'm not in favor of it. That's not to say that I, I have great sympathy for what is going on over there. But in the absence of the kind of overwhelming support from the community at large for this, I don't feel it's something that I am willing to vote on. And one other thing that I would say is that when we talk about this being a welcoming and inclusive community, we also have to respect the opinions and views of people that don't agree with us or disagree with us. And I have noticed that in this city, we are becoming increasingly divisive about respecting the opinions of other people that we do not agree with. And you can't be an inclusive and welcoming city if you will not respect everyone else's opinion. And so for those that are considered to be, you know, pro-Palestinian or pro-Israel, each side has got to respect the views and opinions of the other people. And I'm not seeing that occurring, particularly with a lot of the comments that we receive in our city council meeting. And I would just ask the residents to be respectful of each other and respect opinions that are different than you may hold personally.
Thank you. Yes.
This remains a complicated and challenging issue for all of us sitting at this table tonight. I received emails, as you all have, had conversations with citizens supporting a ceasefire, supporting a ceasefire only if all the hostages held in Gaza released and Hamas is eliminated, advising the council should not be taking a stand on any international issue. And we've gotten examples of other municipalities that have passed resolutions. The situation in the Middle East must come to an end. I recognize that in my role as Member Cleveland Heights Council, I represent everybody. Peace obtained through diplomacy is the only right answer to returning 130 hostages held in Gaza, saving more innocent lives, providing humanitarian aids, and trying to rebuild Gaza and damaged parts of Israel. The only way that it's done is by the leaders in those areas representing Israel and Gaza coming to the table and saying war, no war. That is their responsibility. We all care deeply about the suffering of the people in Gaza and Israel. And consequently, the pain Cleveland Heights citizens are experiencing has been overwhelming. My responsibility is to try to stay focused on the work that I agreed to do during my campaign for the citizens of Cleveland Heights, not contribute to a piece of legislation that will further, further divide us. I believe that these resolutions will add to the divisiveness we've seen from all the communications that we've received. I cannot support the resolutions. I'll be happy to bring forth a piece of legislation as an alternative that can be discussed at our next meeting that supports our residents, encourages our leaders to resolve this tragic conflict, and discourages intimidation, harassment, docking, or threats of violence against any of us who live here. Thank you.
Mr. President. Personally, I sympathize greatly with the tremendous loss of life that we have all seen. I believe that there is a great need for increased humanitarian assistance. I believe that all people, Palestinian and Israeli, should be able to return and rebuild their lives. And I strongly support the work of the United States federal government and other countries in trying to reach negotiated ceasefire. That being said, it's my general view that it is not the role of this council to weigh in on matters of international affairs. But if we were to, I feel that it's important that we are careful with every single word that's included, knowing the importance of this issue. And it's my view that the language in the resolutions included, I'm sorry, the drafts included in our packet does not meet that. So as of now, I do not support the language in those drafts, but I would if Councilwoman Larson shared something or anyone else certainly take a look at it and share my view on it.
Mayor?
Thank you. So just to build on some of what's been said thus far, without offering an apology for the previous resolution. And like I said in the last statement I made on this, I think that our hearts were in the right place, that we were thinking about our neighbors being in pain, being concerned. And we wanted to respond and help people feel cared about, and I think that's important. And building on sort of the carefulness that we need to exhibit as we deal with this situation and the subject matter that is certainly not something I believe any of us has a great deal of experience in. I don't know, based on the response to what we've already done related to this particular issue, that we've exhibited sufficient care. And I think specifically, there's what was in our hearts as we passed it. But then there's what we've communicated to the people of Cleveland Heights, anybody else who has watched this, specifically in Section 2 and Section 6. I think we may have miscommunicated. You know, I offered some concern back in October that we don't want to be mistaken for cosigning or, you know, signing off on anything that a nation-state might do. Because, you know, all over the world, people are committing and being subjected to human rights abuses. And certainly, we don't endorse those here. We like it when human rights are respected generally. But in Section 2, we say, and I, this was phrased in a way that, looking at the words, we can assert what they mean from our perspective, but other people reading it may not hear the same thing that we think we're saying. So in Section 2, we said, "We condemn these attacks and affirm Israel's right to defend itself." And in Section 6, we say, "We support and commit our federal government and the Biden administration in their support of Israel against all terrorist attacks and threats to Israel's existence and security." Now, I thought we were being specific enough to communicate what we intended to communicate. And I think it's clear for everybody that a right to defend yourself is not a right, you know, it's not a blank check. It's not, you know, any action that you claim is in defense of security is not necessarily in defense of security or even achieves that goal. Now, we're sitting here in March, and tens of thousands of people have died. And, you know, a large portion of those people are children, which is especially concerning. But a large proportion of those people, a much larger proportion of those people are innocent civilians. And, you know, in, in Section 6, where we express our support for our federal government, you know, in October, that meant one thing. And, you know, I know that there have been calls to condition aid. And frankly, I don't think that we should restrict this to Israel, certainly. But because we provide military aid to a wide variety of countries, not all of whom respect human rights. I generally don't tend to support our federal government when they do that sort of thing, when they're providing aid to governments, Saudi, for instance, who clearly does not respect human rights. And therefore, I don't support the United States government providing military aid to Saudi. People in our government decided that there are national interests that are more important than that. I know there's been talk about conditioning our military aid generally to support for and adherence to international law and human rights. I don't know that we've communicated this to the people of Cleveland Heights effectively in what we passed. I think that clearly, given the amount of passion that the city council, that I have been on the receiving end, related to what they heard when we spoke, it may merit some clarification. Now, I know that I'd like to leave this to the legislative body to deliberate on whether or not we communicated what we meant to and whether or not at this point, given how the situation has evolved, you know, whether or not this council is interested in clarifying to the people what things we do and what things we do not support since we have provided this support for our federal government, which may be interpreted in ways that we hadn't anticipated. hadn't anticipated. I don't know that, based on the conversation, and we haven't heard from everybody, obviously, Vice President Russell is not here to share her position on this. So perhaps she'll have a different position when she's back here to discuss it, but, or a position, when she's back to discuss it. But I don't know that this situation is going anywhere because people are still dying. You know, children are still dying. And even once a ceasefire begins, people will still be dying of illnesses, lack of access to resources, and the most vulnerable people, elders, children, people who are already sick, will receive the brunt of that. So I think, going back to Councilman Maddox's position, you know, we know that we don't control the federal government and what their policy is. That's not our place to control. But we've expressed a particular level of support, and I think that we've communicated poorly through this resolution what our position actually is. Because I know that if there are human rights abuses being committed right now, and we have expressed support in a way that communicates that we're not concerned about those human rights abuses, we can say everything we want to from this table, but this is an official act of the council. And so maybe it bears a little bit of clarification. That's my position on this. I don't know about the specific language that Councilman Petrus was referring to being opposed to, but this is a moment where, in the deliberative process, a council member could offer amendments.
Okay. Councilman Maddox, and then Councilwoman Boyd.
Just want to state again that I'm absolutely open to any edits, any changes. I'm absolutely ecstatic that we're even having this dialogue at this moment. I just want to share something in terms of, I know we keep speaking about the emails from the community. I don't want to rock the boat on this, but I do want to make it clear that 90% of the emails that I receive from this community are from people we represented in that first resolution, who are now telling us, in many cases, it's inappropriate to say anything at all, when many of those same folks, I still have the emails demanding that this council speak up when it was impacting their community that way. So I think it is extremely hypocritical as leaders to say that one group deserves to be seen, deserves to be heard, deserves to be spoken for in this community, and then another group doesn't even deserve to have it addressed at all because of whatever type of pressure or the volume of emails that we're fielding. I don't care how many emails I got in my email box telling me that someone's opposed to something, if there are also residents that are impacted on the other side, they deserve to be seen and be heard as well. And I think taking emails from anyone who went from demanding that we make a resolution to support Israel, and then demanding that we stay out of any resolutions now, I think is a dangerous place to be because that person is double-minded. And so we have to ask ourselves, why are we even receiving that feedback and taking it seriously when they were just putting political pressure on us to support Israel through a resolution? They filled here. They jam-packed this place and our email boxes. Again, I told you, they demanded to find out where we were when we didn't show up to events. And now everyone is telling us to stay out of international affairs. That was not the case when we made the first resolution. And for some reason, as this council, we're not asking ourselves why that is. There was a huge outcry demanding that we make this resolution to support Israel. Why are we okay with the same group of people saying that we should be silent now because it serves a different group of people? That's not the community I live in. It's not how I operate. From a social justice standpoint, it's absolutely wrong, and it puts us in a very dangerous place. All voices are equally as important, no matter how many volumes of emails I've received, especially when many of those emails were just chain letters that were sent out through organizations and through groups, not people who just specifically articulated something from their heart in many cases. It was a copy and paste, and I know this because they constantly spelled my name wrong, even when I was correcting folks, just copying and pasting the same email over and over and over again. That's not feedback from the community. That's copy and pasting feelings in hopes that it provides political pressure enough that we don't speak out for other residents in this community. And that's okay now to some people, but what if it's a different population in this community? And I'm just going to flat out say, what if it was the African-American population in this community that makes up almost half? Would we still be okay with something like that not being addressed? I think that all voices deserve to be heard. We represent those voices, and I think we need to make, say something and make a statement to acknowledge that. And again, I'll go back to the fact that a Cleveland Heights high school graduate was killed. I think we deserve it as a council, be able to speak for one of our own in that way and say nothing. I think, again, it speaks volumes. It just does. And so I just want to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, I agree that, like I said in the beginning, it is part of our legitimacy rests on our responsiveness to all residents. How we do it matters, and it should be balanced and inclusive. I believe that. I think what the mayor said is fair, that maybe we didn't communicate well after the first resolution or during that first discussion. Hindsight is 2020. And I would also say, I just want to also share that I, in my conversations with leadership, I have also said, and I swear I can hear my mother telling me this, like, this is not, to the mayor's point, this is not going to go away. Even if there were a miraculous change in direction next week, and there was a ceasefire and the hostages were returned, then there is everything else that's a result of this. And we will continue to hear because this is our community. Cleveland Heights is very engaged. Our residents are very engaged. They want to speak to issues both international, national, and state issues, and they want to, they want us as elected representatives of them to speak for them. And so again, these are, and like I also said, along with Councilwoman Maddox, that consistency is important, okay? We're going to say yes to making statements about other issues and matters that we don't directly impact legislatively from our seats, then, you know, if we're not going to do that, then we don't do it. If we are going to do that, then we have to be consistent. And I have also said to the leaders that I've spoken with, and all of whom I consider friends, that that is the case, that we can't be inconsistent about this. We're either going to pass statements that we call resolutions to other bodies of government, or we're going to stop doing that altogether. We cannot pick and choose like that. It makes us inconsistent. It makes us not look like news. And I don't think that there's a place for that here, especially in a community as engaged as this. And I have also shared that while, you know, many of the residents who've requested some sort of statement that reflects a desired negotiated ceasefire have not been Jewish, many of them have been Jewish. So it is important for us to keep that in mind and also just to keep in mind that we should be consistent and responsive, and we can do that in a way that's unifying and inclusive and balanced.
Thank you. You know, we do have to move on in the agenda. I would just, I guess, have my point of view, which is that when we passed the initial resolution, the one that you referred to, Mayor, we passed that on October 16th, I believe, but the resolution was probably written five days before that, so maybe three or four days after the actual incident on October 7th. And obviously, that was quite a different moment in time. And I think it's a mistake in general to make a statement that only covers a moment in time because you leave yourself open to, you know, all the things that can and do change. I remember when I first saw the resolution, I noticed that there was nothing in there about, I'm talking about the 167 on the 16th, and I added one whereas clause that said, "Whereas both Israelis and innocent Palestinians in Gaza are suffering due to the reprehensible actions of Hamas." I mean, it's not much, but that was the only reference to the Palestinians in that initial resolution. And I know the mayor read a statement that you made in October, but I don't remember the date, but you definitely were trying to see around corners at that point, and I think that was, I think that was helpful. I can't support this resolution for the reasons that Councilman Cobb said, because it is and does appear to be very divisive in the community. I would like to hear what Councilwoman Larson would like to propose as an alternative. And I think Councilman Maddox, that was, I mean, I think you've left it open that we can fix this up, we can do something else. I think based on what we've heard from the community and at the table, you know, as an aggregate, I think, Councilwoman Larson, if you would be willing to do that, I'm certainly willing to, you know, book in something new that would be okay with everybody else. Okay, well, not hearing any objections to that, we'll do that on the 18th. And if Councilwoman Larson, the-
I would just say that the sooner you could get it to us about her, just, you know, so that we have some time to look at it. The next thing we have to do here is executive session. Any motion for that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to consider the appointment of a public official.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do a roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Cobb?
Aye.
Duda?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Maddox?
Aye.
Okay, we are back from executive session. The next thing we're going to have, as soon as the mayor comes back in, is a little update on ARPA and security and lighting. Lighting.
I didn't see them. There's so many.
So, okay. So I'm going to skip that just for the moment, and when the mayor comes back in, we'll forward to that report. We'd like to schedule, so we're trying to get council roles and legislative process in place for the council, and it's probably, I think we kind of looked at each other and tacitly agreed that we could do it better if we just had a separate meeting for this. So everybody has said that, I'm sorry, March 20th at, help me?
From 10 to noon.
From 10 to noon. Councilwoman Boyd, would that work for you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. That-
It's 10 to noon. 10 to noon. Could you zoom it?
I can zoom.
Yeah. I mean, if that, yeah, and that's fine.
You're a vote voter, I think so.
Yeah, we'll be shaping it, but we won't be making, you know, we're not voting. So it'd be basically committee of the whole.
All right.
So we're going to book it.
Yep.
All right. And then, Mayor, could you, could you, you know, in a few minutes or less? It does have to be less.
It'll be much less.
Uh, okay. Talk about where we are with the ARPA process and security and lighting and cameras.
So I have no update on security, lighting, and cameras right now.
Okay.
On the ARPA issue, though, we've sent out sort of a standardized application for the nonprofit organizations that council allotted ARPA dollars to fill out so that we can use those standardized applications to create a self-recipient grant applicant, uh, sorry, a grant agreement. We are, and there's also a required, what is it, state and local SL, uh-
F.
F, yeah.
Who knows what it is?
Acronym.
Right. Our local allocations require a risk assessment as well. And so we've sent out the risk assessment for organizations to fill out. And as those roll in, we'll be crafting the grant agreements that are specific to those activities and the dollar figures, and working with the nonprofit organizations to determine sort of specific things like payment schedules and dispersals and that kind of thing. And once we have something negotiated with each of those organizations, we'll provide it to council for council's input and approval, hopefully approval, unless you decide that you don't want to approve it, in which case, you won't. So that's what we're looking for right now, and that's where we are. You know, some organizations have sent information back already, others have not. So we will be going, instead of batching them, we're going to do them as they come in, so that some don't have to wait on others.
That makes sense.
So that's where we are right now. And we did not give them a deadline to fill out these applications, but for the people who asked, we did advise them that this step is a prerequisite for the next step. And so however long it takes them to get us this information, that will add however much time to completing this process and actually getting checks cut.
So the law department reviews the applications and uses those to create the contract?
In coordination with God House as well.
In coordination with God House, and I would assume the executive directors or the entities that are receiving. And then eventually, the contracts come to us. They may not all, based on what you just said, they may not all come at the same time. So we may be doing kind of a tiered vote, if you will, on this, okay? And, you know, obviously trying to get this done as quickly as we can.
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, are you able to provide that update during the council meeting as well?
That's my plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. As we go through this process and we're looking at lots of money going out the door, is there a plan in the accounting department to set an official account so that as we look at financial reports, we can see what's what we have spent and what's sitting there waiting to be spent, both from what the city is going to be administering and our nonprofits?
We can do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on ARPA? And the last thing, the ever-famous other. So I'm going to refer the, so we have a short-term rental ordinance that's being looked at. It was looked at in housing committee, and it was decided that there are two things that are going to happen. And Councilman, you'll add anything, find us anything. One is that the law department is going to review the notes given by the planning director and some others, because we all kind of weighed in a little here and there, and that'll be fixed up sometime, maybe later this month. And that the tax portion, the 3% tax on short-term rentals, because it was not in the original legislation, we're going to refer that to the finance committee, which Councilwoman Larson is the chair of, and that will happen sometime this month as well.
Yes. Councilors Boyd and Maddox, I'm looking at 5 o'clock on March 18th. Is there any possibility we can come in early and have that discussion?
Sure. I can do that.
It's at March 18th, I'm correct?
Yeah.
So that would be on the day we're meeting? Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And Mayor Sarah, we'd really like, need to have the finance department there for that discussion, so we can find out with their capacity.
Yeah.
At least the interim acting director, whether you think that's possible or is that asking too much?
It's not asking too much, it's just dependent on scheduling. So I can get with her and select you.
Thank you, and I appreciate it.
I can do that. Okay, actually- Okay, actually, we can, my goodness. I don't, I don't have anything else on other because we actually did already talk about the new vacancy, which I knew there. So anybody else have anything for the good of the order? I don't even know why I said that. I don't know what it means.
With the additional, say, 23 minutes, you go back and take a deep dive into the possible resolutions and take a look at what language, for instance, is objectionable?
Well, I'll tell you what. Since we had the conversation and there wasn't support for doing this particular resolution, and the Councilwoman Larson did offer to do a resolution, and we, at that point, I had asked everybody if that was okay. And there was no objection to that. I'd rather just leave it at that. And we'll look at it on the 18th. And if for some reason, you know, we get stuck with that, and I think we've all heard your comments, which, you know, we really need to keep in mind, and actually, we need to keep everybody's comments in mind. I think Councilwoman Larson will try to do that. And let's see where we go. I think that because this, um, this particular resolution was so objectionable, I think it's probably better, you know, because if we go line by line, you know, then we're, I think, going to fall into something that we may not want to be in. Whereas this, this way, we have an opportunity to do something fresh, but use what we talked about at the table to move forward. And I think that's probably the best way to go.
And just to clarify, I don't know what language in what resolution was objectionable to prove exactly. So I don't have sort of a position on that, but I do want to caution the council that these things will proceed as they do. And you are talking about taking an additional two weeks to even discuss it again. And, you know, whether it's progress in the right direction or in the wrong direction, that progress will certainly, should it occur, leave Cleveland Heights behind, more behind than perhaps we already are in clarifying our position.
I appreciate that. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned, and we'll see everybody at 7:30. We'll be ready to meet.